Town meeting is in order. I'll ask the town clerk to come up and read the opening of the warrant.
Warrant for the special town meeting. To either of the constables of the town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet in Freetown Elementary School Auditorium, forty-three Bullock Road, Freetown, Massachusetts, on the sixth day of June, two thousand sixteen, at seven o'clock P.M., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: a Stony Post Office, East Freetown Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Freetown, Junior's Convenience Store and Freetown Town Hall, and the Freetown Communications Center. Thereof they will not make return of the original warrant with your doings thereof, immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts, given our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this eighteenth day of May, anno. Dominique, two thousand sixteen. And I just want to state for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Comcast. And is there anyone else that's recording the meeting? Okay. There is yellow tickets and pink tickets. The yellow tickets are for the special town meeting that we're having right now. So if we ask you to show the tickets to do a hand count, then it'd be the yellow one for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Before we start, because I saw some people that were trying to signal there's no volume control on this microphone. And the school warned us that this one was going to be quieter than all the other ones. Can everybody hear? Okay. All right. For the special town meeting, just so everybody knows, for all of the articles will be funded from free cash unless it says otherwise. So for Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from property insurance department one ninety-three to workers' compensation insurance department nine twelve for the purpose of funding premiums for police and fire special high-risk deductible accident insurance and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the town administrator and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
All right. I have a motion and second to adopt the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article's adopted unanimously. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the insurance recovery account the sum of forty thousand five hundred thirty dollars to purchase and equip one new or late-model police vehicle and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the chief of police and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article's adopted unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of five thousand one hundred dollars to pay for contracted bus services from Durham Bus Company during the months of October, November, and December, two thousand fifteen, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District, Fred Baker, Director of Finance, and it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to establish a capital stabilization fund pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, for the purpose of funding capital assets either by direct purchase of such asset or indirect payment of related debt service of such asset and to transfer the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from free cash and/or one million dollars from stabilization funds for such purpose and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the Board of Selectmen and requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Yeah. We have to be... All right. So the motion is to adopt this article removing the word "or" so that we would fund it at five hundred thousand dollars from free cash and one million dollars from the stabilization fund. Is there any question on the motion for the article?
There we go. Lucille Rosa Nyman. How does this stabilization fund differ from the regular stabilization fund?
Money that is put into the capital stabilization fund is used for capital items.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions on the article? All right. So once again, the motion is to take out the word "or" so that it's both. It's the total of one point five million dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the Board of Selectmen and it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend. I believe it's three hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Board of Selectmen?
We recommend three hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read with the amount of three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Is there any discussion on the article? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred ten dollars and thirty cents from the sewer enterprise fund for the purpose of paying a prior fiscal year bill for sewer usage charges, set amount to be funded with a transfer from retained earnings of the sewer enterprise fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and it requires a nine-tenth vote. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved by unanimous... uh, unanimously approved, rather. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifteen hundred dollars from the water enterprise fund for the purpose of paying a prior fiscal year bill for a water meter technical support contract, set amount to be funded with a transfer from the water enterprise emergency reserve fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and it requires a nine-tenth vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Seconded. Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Uh, we cannot start the annual... the appointed hour having arrived. In a much larger form, thankfully, being present, we'll call the annual town meeting to order. And once again, let the town clerk come up and read the opening of the warrant.
Warrant for the annual town meeting. To either of the constables of the town of Freetown greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the Freetown Elementary School Auditorium, forty-three Bullock Road, Freetown, Massachusetts, on Monday, the sixth day of June, two thousand sixteen, at seven thirty P.M., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: a Stony Post Office, East Freetown Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Freetown, Junior's Convenience Store and Freetown Town Hall and the Freetown Communications Center. Thereof they will not make return of the original warrant with your doings thereof, immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts, given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this eighteenth day of May, anno. Dominique, two thousand sixteen, signed by the Freetown Board of Selectmen to the town clerk, town of Freetown, Massachusetts, May twentieth, two thousand sixteen. I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described in it, signed by County Cabot Oncible. And again, now we're doing the pink ticket so if we ask for a hand count, please use your pink tickets. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, before we start, one of our selectmen has asked to address the meeting for a moment.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everybody. We have our town annual report book. It's out in the hall that you can pick up. A lot of good information in it. But this year... this year is for the year two thousand fourteen or fifteen. This is for the year of two thousand fifteen. On the front page is a picture of the All-Star Market that is no longer at the present time. It's across the street now. It's Junior's. But Junior Resendiz, Mariano Resendiz, a longtime selectman here in Freetown, passed away, uh, in that time period. And, uh, the book is dedicated to him. And, uh, in addition, a lot of people that had served the town who had passed away in either fifteen or fourteen. And I'd just like to read their names. And maybe we can take them over to sign us because they were a very big part of the town of Freetown. Ossie Brady, library trustee. Gene Mochwin, election worker. Harry T. Terry Johnston, secretary to the superintendent of Freetown Lakeville School District. Clarence Gideon, firefighter engineer as a captain and EMT for the fire department. He was with Council on Aging as a van driver. He was on the Housing Authority and he also spent many, many hours of donated time with the, uh, with the senior center. Al Betoff LeFond, he was a dog officer here and a pound... uh, and a field driver and pound keeper for many years. Al ran Pine Rose Plastic upon Bullock Grove. Reverend Leded Mulaney, Conservation Commission. Uh, I remember Father Mulaney. We, uh, we, uh, ran Cathedral Camp a long time ago. Louise Hackett, a mathematics teacher at Bonica Mutual High School. And Dorothy Pilling, cafeteria worker at Bonica Mutual High School. I'd like to take a moment. Maybe we can bow our heads and have a moment to sign us to the people that should... the community that passed away. All right. Thank you very much. Also, uh, don't forget, grab a book. And, uh, there's a flight is out there talking about new, uh, operation for our trash starting July for us. Recycling will pick up every week. In addition to your trash recycling will be picked up every week. Thank you very much. And, uh, let Mike pick it up now.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, folks. Uh, like we did with the last time, for the annual town meeting, all of the articles tonight will be funded from taxation unless it's otherwise specified. For Article One, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, this general government, town reports, planning board, finance committee, Board of Appeals, for protection of persons and property, for health and sanitation, for highways, for libraries, for veterans' benefits, for cemeteries, town parks, interest in principal on school loans, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, and unclassified tax titles, Reserve Fund, Bristol County Retirement, Incidental Soil Conservation, Council on Aging, Graves Registration Officer, Cultural Council, capital equipment, capital building improvement, and insurance and/or take any action relative thereto. This article was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and it requires a majority vote. So now you want to switch over to the budget packet that came with the warrant. And as we've done in years past, for each department, you'll hear the department's request and you'll hear the finance committee's recommendation. If you disagree with the finance committee's recommendation or you have a question about a specific budget, please call out "hold." At the end of each section, we'll vote to adopt the finance committee's recommended budget for anything that's not on hold and then we'll go back and deal with the holds if there are any. Okay. So, starting at the top, uh, town moderator, personnel, requested four hundred thirteen dollars. Recommended four hundred thirteen dollars. The Board of Selectmen, personnel, requested sixty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Recommended sixty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Expenses, requested thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. Recommended thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. Total for the Board of Selectmen, requested eighty-two thousand six dollars sixty-nine cents. Recommended eighty-two thousand six dollars sixty-nine cents. For the town administrator, for personnel, requested one hundred ten thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Recommended one hundred ten thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Expenses, requested seven thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Recommended seven thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Total for the town administrator, requested one hundred eighteen thousand two hundred two dollars sixty-eight cents. Recommended one hundred eighteen thousand two hundred two dollars sixty-eight cents. For the finance committee, for personnel, requested five hundred dollars. Recommended five hundred dollars. Expenses, one thousand dollars. Requested one thousand dollars. Recommended. Total, requested fifteen hundred dollars. Recommended fifteen hundred dollars. For the Reserve Fund, requested one hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Recommended one hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. For the town accountant, for personnel, requested ninety-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. Recommended ninety-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. For expenses, requested seven thousand three hundred eleven dollars. Recommended seven thousand three hundred eleven dollars. Total for the town accountant, requested one hundred seven thousand fifty dollars. Recommended one hundred seven thousand fifty dollars. For the town audit, requested nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Recommended nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. For the Board of Assessors, for personnel, requested sixty-three thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars. Recommended sixty-three thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars. For expenses, requested fourteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Recommended fourteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Total for the Board of Assessors, requested seventy-seven thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. Recommended seven... uh, seventy-seven thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. For the town treasurer, for personnel, requested one hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Recommended one hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. For expenses, requested thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Recommended thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Total for the town treasurer, requested two hundred five thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Recommended two hundred five thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. For legal fees, requested sixty-five thousand dollars. Recommended sixty-five thousand dollars. For management information systems, expenses, requested twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Recommended twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. For tax title foreclosures, expenses, requested fifteen thousand five hundred dollars... excuse me. Recommended fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. For the town clerk, for personnel, requested eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. Recommended eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. For expenses, requested four thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. Recommended four thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. Total for the town clerk, requested ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars eighty cents. Recommended ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. For primaries and elections, for personnel, requested nine thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars. Recommended nine thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars. For expenses, requested eighty-four hundred dollars. Recommended eighty-four hundred dollars. Total for primaries and like elections, requested eighteen thousand seventy-two dollars. Recommended eighteen thousand seventy-two dollars. For registration, for personnel, requested one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. Recommended one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. Expenses, requested three thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Recommended three thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Total for registration, requested five thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars. Recommended five thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars. For the Conservation Commission, for personnel, requested six thousand dollars. Recommended six thousand dollars. For expenses, requested five thousand dollars. Recommended five thousand dollars. Total for the Conservation Commission, requested eleven thousand dollars. Recommended eleven thousand dollars. For the Planning Board, for personnel, requested forty thi... forty-three thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-eight cents. Recommended forty-three thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-eight cents. For expenses, requested five thousand dollars. Recommended five thousand dollars. Total for the Planning Board, requested forty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-eight cents. Recommended forty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-eight cents. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, for personnel, requested one thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. Recommended one thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. For expenses, requested one thousand dollars. Recommended one thousand dollars. Total for the Zoning Board of Appeals, two thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars requested. Two thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars recommended. For the Soil Board, requested personnel, seven hundred dollars. Recommended seven hundred dollars. For expenses, requested four hundred dollars. Recommended four hundred dollars. Total for the Soil Board, requested eleven hundred dollars. Recommended eleven hundred dollars. For public buildings and property maintenance, for personnel, requested thirty-five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars eighty-eight cents. Recommended thirty-five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars eighty-eight cents. For expenses, one hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars requested. One hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars recommended. Total for public buildings and property maintenance, requested two hundred twelve thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars eighty-eight cents. Recommended two hundred twelve thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars eighty-eight cents. For property insurance, expenses, requested ninety-five thousand seventy-six dollars. Recommended ninety-five thousand seventy-six dollars. For the town reports, requested thirty-five hundred dollars. Recommended thirty-five hundred dollars. For the DEP hazmat assessment, requested twenty-five hundred dollars. Recommended twenty-five hundred dollars. With no holds, that gives us a total general government request, one million three hundred forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars eleven cents. Recommended one hundred... uh, one million three hundred forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars eleven cents. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the finance committee's recommendation.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt those budgets in the finance committee's recommended numbers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That section is adopted unanimously. Onto public safety. For the Police Department, for overtime, requested one hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars fifty-three cents. Recommended one hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars fifty-three cents. For personnel, requested one million four hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars ninety-three cents. Recommended one million four hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars ninety-three cents. For expenses, requested one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Recommended one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Total for the Police Department, requested one million seven hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred nineteen dollars forty-six cents. Recommended one million seven hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred nineteen dollars forty-six cents. For the Communications Center, for overtime, requested twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars fifty-four cents. Recommended twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars fifty-four cents. For personnel, requested two hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars seventy-six cents. Recommended two hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars seventy-six cents. For expenses, requested thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. Recommended thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. Total for the Communications Center, requested two hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars thirty cents. Recommended two hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars thirty cents. For the Fire Department, for overtime, requested one hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. Recommended one hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. For personnel, requested eight hundred eighty-four dollars... uh, eight hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred thirty-eight, uh, eight dollars. Right. Re... They almost got a big cut. Rec- they almost got a big cut. Recommended eight hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars. Expenses requested one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars, recommended one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Total for the Fire Department requested one million one hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars, recommended one million one hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars. For the Building Department, for Personnel requested ninety-two thousand forty-eight dollars, recommended ninety-two thousand forty-eight dollars and forty cents. For expenses, Scott would have hated that. For expenses, seven thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars requested, seven thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars recommended. Total for the Building Department requested ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars forty cents, recommended ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars forty cents. For the Gas Inspectors, for Personnel requested ten thousand eighty dollars, recommended ten thousand eighty dollars. For Expenses requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Total, for the Gas Inspectors requested ten thousand eighty dollars, recommended ten thousand eighty dollars. For the Plumbing Inspectors, for Personnel requested seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars, recommended seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars. For Expenses requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Total for the Plumbing Inspectors requested seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars, recommended seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars. For the Sealer of Weights and Measures, excuse me, for, uh, expenses requested four thousand dollars, recommended four thousand dollars. For the Electrical Inspectors, for Personnel, requested forty thousand dollars, recommended forty thousand dollars. For Expenses requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Total for the Electrical Inspectors requested forty thousand dollars, recommended forty thousand dollars. For Civil Defense, for Personnel requested two thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars, recommended two thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars. For Expenses requested seventeen thousand dollars, recommended seventeen thousand dollars. For total for Civil Defense requested nineteen thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars, recommended nineteen thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars. For the Animal Control Officer, for Personnel requested thirty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars forty-one cents, recommended thirty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars forty-one cents. For Expenses requested five thousand nine hundred thirty dollars, recommended five thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. Total for the Animal Control Officer requested forty-one thousand nine hundred nine dollars forty-one cents, recommended four thousand, forty-one thousand nine hundred nine dollars forty-one cents. For Forestry, the Tree Warden, Personnel requested six thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, recommended six thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars. Expenses requested eleven thousand dollars, recommended eleven thousand dollars. Total, requested seventeen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, recommended seventeen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars. For the Harbor Master, for Expenses requested one hundred dollars, recommended one hundred dollars. Total Public Safety with no holds, three million four hundred forty-four thousand eighty-five dollars fifty-seven cents requested, three million four hundred forty-four thousand eighty-five dollars fifty-seven cents recommended. I'd like a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Make a motion to approve.
Selective.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt the Public Safety Budgets at the Finance Committee's recommended amounts. Are there any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are adopted unanimously. For the School Budgets, uh, just so that you know, the second set of lines where it says Regional School Assessments, the numbers that are printed in your budget are, have changed. The School Committee revised their request and they lowered it, and the Selectmen and the Finance Committee revised their recommendations and raised them. So they now match. The School Committee requests and the recommendations now match, and you're going to hear the numbers as they now are, not the numbers as they're printed in there. So for the School Committee Stipends, for Personnel requested four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars, recommended four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars. Regional School Assessments, for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment for Education, this is where the numbers change, requested eight million eight hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars, recommended eight million eight hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars. For the, uh, Free Town Lakeville Regional Assessment for Transportation, this number is also slightly different. The request is three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars, and the recommendation is three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars. For Regional Debt on the Middle School, requested one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars, recommended one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars. Regional Debt on the Austin Middle School, seventy-five thousand one hundred six dollars requested, seventy-five thousand one hundred six dollars recommended. For Regional Debt for Technology, requested seventy-five thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars, recommended seventy-five thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars. For Regional Debt for the Athletic Facilities, this number may also be different, but it may not, thirty-one thousand two hundred forty-six dollars is the request, thirty-one thousand four hundred twenty, uh, two hundred forty-six dollars is the recommendation. The total for the schools with the revised numbers is nine million five hundred seven thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars requested, nine million five hundred seven thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars recommended. For the Bristol County Agricultural High School Assessment, the requested number is thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine, recommended thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine. For the Old Colony Vocational School Assessment, requested one million eight hundred sixty-thousand two hundred eighty dollars, recommended one million eight hundred sixty-thousand two hundred eighty dollars. So with no holds, that gives us an education total, and this number will be different also, eleven million four hundred four thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars requested, eleven million four hundred four thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars recommended. I ask for a motion to adopt the recommended numbers.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt those budgets for Education at the Finance Committee's recommended numbers. Are there any questions on these numbers?
Paul Cudo, thirteen King Philip Way, East Free Town. As I look over the budget, uh, and this was based on the original numbers that were here, I couldn't help but notice that every single, nearly every single item on this budget, whatever was asked for, was recommended by the Finance Committee and the Selectmen. Two, in two glaring instances that I noticed on this budget, school, according to the original numbers, roughly two hundred thousand dollars that was taken off what the school had asked for. And the veterans was also, um, and that's for another reading. And I'm just curious as to, if, is, I don't know if anyone from the School Committee here who can sort of, uh, answer why the numbers have been adjusted, and was it pressure from you folks because you wouldn't approve two hundred thousand dollars? I'm, I'm baffled. We just wheeled around, or wielded around over one point eight billion dollars into different, you know, funds for rainy days and other things, but we can't throw an extra two hundred thousand dollars to a school committee, I'm sorry, to, to, to a school department that, speaking from personally one school, were already shorthanded, and in, in, in areas we really can't afford to be. I would like to recommend that we go back to the original number that was in the budget, nine million seventy-nine thousand two hundred eighty-three thousand. I know that money's going to get well spent, and if there's anybody from the School Committee that can help explain why the difference in, in, in numbers all of a sudden.
Are you, are you making that as a motion or just as a suggestion?
Uh, I, I would like to make the motion that the school, the Regional Assessment for Education, go back to the original number on the document, nine million seventy-nine thousand two hundred eighty-three thousand dollars.
Two hundred and eighty. There was no seconds in the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, we had a second in the back. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm, I'm going to ask the School Department to address why they lowered the request, and then the Finance Committee and the Selectmen to address why they recommended, if they choose to do that.
Jean Fox, eleven Jeffrey Lane, Vice Chair of the Regional School Committee. Uh, we did in fact vote a higher number originally, um, and when the two towns got together, it was very clear that it wasn't going to pass. Uh, rather than go to joint town meeting, we decided to, uh, re, we rework our numbers and see what we could do. And we will say though, that for Free Town, the increase this year is point zero two percent, um, as opposed, on their assessment, as opposed to previous years of three, four percent, where we have tried to augment, uh, our, our assessment so that we could provide what we need to provide to educate our children. Um, last year, we restored a number of paraprofessional positions, and that was costly and not in our budget, but was absolutely essential, uh, for the benefit of our kids and for our educators, uh, to have these supports in the schools. Um, we worked really hard to, to get grant money, we worked really hard to trim where we could. Um, we've finally come to the conclusion that for this year, we're going to try to work with these numbers, uh, but I have to be honest, I think next year will be quite difficult.
Either the Selectmen or the Finance Committee on either board like to...
The, uh, School Department had made a, their initial request was very high, and I don't know if everybody realizes how the towns are assessed, but, um, we're assessed, uh, by the state, and the state mandates us a certain amount based on the population and the income of the people that live in each town. And for example, this year, the required assessment for education for Free Town is seven million seven hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars. For Lakeville, the required assessment is ten million two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and eight dollars, for a total of eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-five The School Committee comes up with a budget, and then they offset their, their budget request by income that they have coming in, such as chapter ninety, uh, seventy money that comes in, circuit breaker money and so forth. And, um, what happens at that point is, whatever we're required to pay compared to what they're asking for for education, is then split between the two towns based on a per pupil assessment. So, based on the budget that is presented tonight by the moderator, Free Town is kicking in an additional one point one million forty-five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars over and above what we're required to pay by the state. And Lakeville is kicking in one million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars over and above what they're required to pay by the state. The other thing that comes into play here is that it's done on a formula basis. Now, if we step back a year, last year, Lakeville, who has the most number of kids, they kind of like drive the pot because it's done in a formula basis. So last year, they kicked in X number of dollars. In Free Town, because of the way the formula was, had to pay in far more than we really wanted to pay in. It cost us more out of our, out of our budget. This year, it's just the difference. Lakeville kicked in five hundred and five thousand dollars, but because there was a shift in what the state requires Free Town and Lakeville to pay, odds went down. We're kicking in much less. We're kicking in only twenty-one thousand extra dollars over what we did last year, twenty-one thousand more than we had to pay last year. Now, at one point in time, and this is to go with the gentleman that got up earlier, they wanted, uh, uh, there was a suggestion that Free Town, oh, just give in another two hundred thousand dollars. Well, if we gave two hundred thousand dollars more in there, Lakeville was forced to pay in about seven hundred and seven thousand more. They can't afford it, so they didn't do it. So the towns for the last couple of years has, have been working together to try to, to try to control costs. Now certainly, every year, you know, you always ask for the most you can get, and we have a very good school system. There's a lot of hardworking people that work for our school system. They, they give us good education, our kids get good education. But, it's non-sustainable at the rate that they were asking for. So, you know, the towns have done it for two years in a row to hold down costs. Now certainly, their costs go up like everybody else's costs. They have, uh, you know, last year they rewrote their, uh, their, uh, contracts for their employees and, uh, you know, it's hard to keep teachers, so, you know, they had a significant increase. That keeps happening, we keep observing that. Now, in addition to the education part, we also are assessed, um, for transportation on a per pupil basis, and we're assessed for debt. Now, you'll see later on in this annual town meeting, that we have, uh, an article coming up from the school. That's an additional five hundred and ten thousand dollars to repair the, uh, the swimming pool area, get that up to snuff. Now, the Board of Selectmen is recommending that article. Last year, they did the same thing for the track, but we didn't bring it to the annual town meeting. There's a provision in our regional contract, uh, agreement between the two towns and the School Department, that if the School Department requests capital improvement, and they notify either Board or, or both Boards of Selectmen, if we don't act by putting it in front of the voters for sixty days, it's an automatic approval. Last year, when they requested the amount to, uh, uh, for the, for the track, both towns, Board of Selectmen agreed they were going to add it in as an article, and it automatically went into effect. This year, both Boards of Selectmen said, listen, this is another five hundred and ten thousand dollars. We want the voters to make that decision tonight, like they should on an annual town meeting. Now again, we're recommending that we do that. So that's an additional five hundred and ten thousand for the School Department. I think what you're recommending is really going to throw the whole process out of sync, and I'll tell you why. Lakeville's having their town meeting tonight. Lakeville is going, is presenting the same type of budget that we're presenting. If we here change this, and Lakeville doesn't change this, we're forcing a joint town meeting. You have a joint town meeting, both towns get together, they vote on a budget for the schools. What happens? Let's say people voted to give the higher amount. Well, guess what? We come back, and we have another meeting here because we have to cut the towns' budgets and reallocate everything again. So you, you, it, it, listen, the School Department is not hurting for money. This is a fair budget that, uh, that they're getting, and I think we should just go with what we've, both towns have adopted to do. That's my, uh, my take on it. Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee wish to add anything to that, or are you good?
No. You send it off.
Okay. Fred?
Uh, Fred Baker, Director of Finance, the School Department. Uh, I just would point out that there were some changes after the budget took place. Um, as most of you probably know, we get numbers for the state from the state, then we get additional numbers, and things change. So we did get, at this point, we're scheduled to get seventy thousand more revenue than it first looked like when we did the initial budget. In addition to that, uh, we qualified for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand more in circuit breaker revenue for the state. So we essentially are in a position where, when you get more revenue, it reduces the appropriated request. So the, the revenue side of the whole equation changed, which then made the request change. In addition, I would second what Mr. Sadek said, that, uh, voting a different number would, uh, create a problem.
Okay, is there any additional discussion on the school budget? All right. We do have a motion and a second for an amended number, so unless that's withdrawn, we'll vote on the, um, the proposed amendment. The motion before us is to fund the Free Town Lakeville Regional Assessment for Education at nine million seventy-nine thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the men, the amendment is rejected unanimously. So to go back and vote on the original numbers, or the, uh, the, um, numbers as they were read, and just once again, that would be the Regional Assessment for Education would be eight million eight hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars, and for Transportation, three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars, and the rest of it, I believe, is as printed in the handout. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The school budget is adopted as recommended unanimously. For Public Works, excuse me, for the Highway Department, for overtime requested five hundred twenty-five dollars, recommended five hundred twenty-five dollars. For Personnel requested three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents, recommended three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents. For Expenses requested eighty thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars, recommended eighty thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. Total for the Highway Department requested four hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars fifty-seven cents, recommended four hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars fifty-seven cents. Excuse me. For Snow and Ice Removal, for overtime requested twenty-five thousand dollars, recommended twenty-five thousand dollars. For Expenses requested seventy-five thousand dollars, recommended seventy-five thousand dollars. Total for Snow and Ice Removal requested one hundred thousand dollars, recommended one hundred thousand dollars. For Street Lamps, for except, for expenses, thirteen thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars requested, thirteen thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars recommended. For Trash Collection and Disposal, for expenses, recommended four hundred ninety-one thousand twenty-six dollars, recommended four hundred ninety-one thousand twenty-six dollars. For the Transfer Station, for Personnel, requested sixty thousand four hundred dollars, recommended sixty thousand four hundred dollars. For Expenses requested ninety-six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars, recommended ninety-six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars. Total for the Transfer Station requested one hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred forty-two dollars, recommended one hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. For the Cemetery Commission, for expenses, requested twenty-two thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars, recommended twenty-two thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. Public Works total, for those not on hold, one million two hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars fifty-seven cents recommended, one million two hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars fifty-seven cents, uh, recommended. I have a motion on the recommendations.
Make a motion to approve this, Brad.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt the Public Works budgets as recommended by the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are adopted unanimously. For Health and Human Services, for the Health Inspection Services, for Personnel, requested eighty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars forty cents, recommended eighty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars forty cents. For Expenses, requested ninety-five thousand, uh, excuse me, eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars, recommended eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars. Total for Health Inspection Services, requested ninety-five thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars forty cents, recommended ninety-five thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars forty cents. For the Council on Aging, for Personnel, requested one hundred eighteen thousand six hundred eighteen dollars six cents, recommended one hundred eighteen thousand six hundred eighteen dollars six cents. For Expenses, requested nineteen thousand two hundred four dollars, recommended nineteen thousand two hundred four dollars. Total for the Council on Aging requested one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars six cents, recommended one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars six cents. For Veteran Services, for Personnel, requested eighteen thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars, recommended eleven thousand five hundred dollars. For Expenses, requested one hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars, recommended one hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Total for Veteran Services requested one hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars, recommended one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars, recommended one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. For Memorial and Veterans Days, for expenses, requested twenty-two hundred dollars, recommended twenty-two hundred dollars. Health and Human Services total, requested four hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars forty-six cents, recommended four hundred sixteen thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars forty-six cents. Like a rec, uh, motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Make a motion to approve the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended budgets. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are adopted unanimously. For Culture and Recreation, for the Libraries, for Personnel, requested eighty-three thousand ninety-seven dollars, uh, nine hundred seven dollars, recommended eighty-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars. For Expenses, requested thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars, recommended thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. Total for the Libraries, requested one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars, recommended one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. For the James White Memorial Library, for expenses, requested five thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars, recommended five thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. For the Arts Cultural Council, for expenses, requested two hundred dollars, recommended one thousand dollars. For the Historical Commission, for expenses, requested five hundred dollars, recommended five hundred dollars. For the Parade and Fireworks Committee, for expenses, requested three thousand dollars, recommended three thousand dollars. For a total Culture and Recreation budget, uh, one hundred thirty-two thousand ninety-six dollars requested, one hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars recommended.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the recommendations of the Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are adopted unanimously. For Debt Service, for the Free Town Elementary School, Principal excluded, requested five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, recommended five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. For the Floods of 2010, Principal non-excluded, requested seventy thousand dollars, recommended seventy thousand dollars. Total for Retirement of Debt, six hundred five thousand dollars requested, six hundred five thousand dollars recommended. Interest on Long-Term Debt, for the Free Town Elementary School, Interest Excluded, requested eighty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars, recommended eighty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. For the Floods of 2010, Interest Non-Excluded, requested ninety-one hundred dollars, recommended ninety-one hundred dollars. Total for Interest on Long-Term Debt, requested ninety-five thousand three hundred fifty dollars, recommended ninety-five thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Interest on Short-Term Debt, Expenses, requested eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, recommended eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Total for Debt Service, requested seven hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, recommended seven hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures as read. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. For Unclassified, for the SERPEN Assessment, requested one thousand five hundred forty-two dollars ninety-six cents, recommended one thousand five hundred forty-two dollars ninety-six cents. Retirement Pension Contributions, for Personnel, requested seven hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars, recommended seven hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars. For Workers' Compensation, Personnel, requested seventy-three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, recommended seventy-three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. For Unemployment Benefits, for Personnel, requested thirty thousand dollars, recommended thirty thousand dollars. For Health Insurance, for Personnel, requested one million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars, recommended one million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars. For Life Insurance, requested twelve hundred dollars, recommended twelve hundred dollars. For Medicare, requested fifty thousand dollars, recommended fifty thousand dollars. For Court Judgments, requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. For Liability Insurance, requested sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, recommended forty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars. For Townwide Fueling, requested one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, recommended one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. For Transfer to Trust Stabilization, requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. For Transfer to Trust OPEB Liability, requested zero dollars, recommended two hundred thousand dollars. Total Unclassified, two million five hundred forty-four thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars ninety-six cents recommended, two million seven hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars ninety-six cents recommended.
Make a motion to approve as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are adopted. Now we're moving on to the Capital Budget. I'm not sure if that's a separate page or not. Uh, for the Capital Equipment, for the Lease of Police Cruisers, requested eighty-seven thousand one hun, oh, yeah, eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars, recommended eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars. For Lease of the Fire and EMS Ambulance, requested one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and one cent, recommended, you gotta give Gary this, he goes to the penny, one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and one cent. For the Purchase of Fire and EMS Equipment, requested fifteen thousand dollars, recommended fifteen thousand dollars. For the Lease of Highway Vehicles and Equipment, requested ninety-five thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars forty-five cents, recommended ninety-five thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars forty-five cents. For the Purchase of Highway Equipment, requested forty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars, recommended forty-four thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars. For Purchase of Animal Control Officer and Tristat Equip, I don't know what that is, requested eighty-seven hundred dollars, recommended eighty-seven hundred dollars. Total for Capital Equipment, requested thirty, three hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred forty-two dollars forty-six cents, recommended three hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars forty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve, uh, the Capital Equipment Budget as recommended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted unanimously. For Capital Building Improvements, for Town Building Improvements, requested eighty-seven thousand dollars, recommended eighty-seven thousand dollars. For Fire Station Improvements, recommended fifteen, uh, requested fifteen thousand dollars, recommended fifteen thousand dollars. For Police Station Improvements, requested forty thousand dollars, recommended forty thousand dollars. Total for Capital Building Improvements, requested one hundred forty-two thousand dollars, recommended one hundred forty-two thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the Capital Building Improvements as recommended by the Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. I believe we're done with the budget now. Okay. We'll move back to the regular warrant, uh, packet now. For Article Two, I'm told that the recommendations of both Boards are the same. So once again, with Article Two, like we did with Article One, uh, we'll be voting on the recommendations. I believe the recommendations are the same as what everybody asked for. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town, as provided by Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight of the General Laws, as amended for the fiscal year 2017, and/or take any action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Moderator, requested four hundred thirteen dollars per year, recommended four hundred thirteen dollars per year. Board of Selectmen, requested six thousand dollars per member per year, recommended six thousand dollars per member per year. For the Town Clerk, requested fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty dollars per year, recommended fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty dollars per year. For the Board of Assessors, requested four thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars per member per year, recommended four thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars per member per year. For the Tree Warden, requested twenty dollars forty-eight cents per hour, recommended twenty dollars forty-eight cents per hour. For the Highway Surveyor, requested sixty-four thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars per year, recommended sixty-four thousand six hun-
(inaudible)
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, requested sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars and fifty-seven cents per year, recommended sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars and fifty-seven cents per year. For the Regional School District Committee, requested one thousand one hundred six dollars per member per year, recommended one thousand one hundred six dollars per member per year.
Make a motion to accept as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the recommended figures as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article carries unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen D, or any other authority to approve the bond authorization voted on April twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen, by the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Committee, and the amount of five hundred ten thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs of reconstructing the district swimming pool, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Now the Selectmen?
We recommend.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee votes not to, uh, recommend, as we never saw any, uh, figures relative to this, uh, bids or anything on it.
Okay. Uh, would anybody, uh, well, we need a motion first.
Motion to recommend, five, ten.
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the article at the amount of five hundred ten thousand dollars. Is there any other discussion on the article? It looks like there's got to be. Okay.
Just mentioned that the, um, swimming pool HVAC system is at the end of its useful life. As a result of that, it creates a situation where the moisture is too strong, and it is causing structural damage, both in the columns and in terms of the steel and the ceiling. It is safe at this point, we've had it inspected, but it will not continue to be safe for years to come. So, uh, this is, uh, not merely an attempt to upgrade the pool, but an attempt to save the pool. Uh, as far as the financing of it, uh, there's no actual payment in Fiscal Seventeen. The first payment would be in Fiscal Eighteen. In Fiscal Nineteen, the technology financing comes off line, so we make our last payment in Eighteen. So we would be pulling out essentially a hundred and seventy-six thousand of funding, uh, split between the two towns in Nineteen. From that point on, our debt decreases as the principal on all of the debt becomes lower each year. So, um, this basically amounts to about two hundred and forty thousand over the life of the project for Free Town, but it will be counteracted to a great degree by the technology coming off of line in, uh, two nineteen. Thank you.
Are there other, any other questions or comments on this article?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, we got a good team at the Regional School Department, and they're really trying to keep the place running tip-top. This, like Mr. Baker said, this, this is something that really needs to get done. I think the confusion, and I'm not speaking for the Finance Committee, but I think this confusion here is that, um, this is an authorization to allow the school to go ahead and borrow the money to, to make the repairs. Uh, it's not within our jurisdiction to tell them how to make repairs or go off a bid. That's their job to do. I think that might have been the confusion with the, with the Finance Committee, thinking that, you know, we didn't have all the facts, but certainly, all we're doing is authorizing them to go ahead. They did it before last year, they did a good, great job, so, and that's why the Board of Selectmen is recommending it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this article? All right. So the motion on the floor is to adopt the article at the amount requested. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of two thousand dollars, to pay for the per, public purpose of supporting the sexual assault and domestic violence program of the New Bedford Women's Center Incorporated, and/or take any action relative thereto, was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Four as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Four is adopted by the majority, uh, by unanimous, rather. Uh, for Article Five, just note, you have a chart in the, uh, warrant, on the top row of the chart, in the last column, it says Fiscal Sixteen Spending Limit. That's just a typo, it's supposed to be Fif, uh, Fiscal Seventeen, so we'll be voting as if it's Fiscal Seventeen printed there. To see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three E and a Half, of the Massachusetts General Laws, for the following programs and purposes, to determine whether such revolving fund accounts shall be credited with the following departmental receipts, to determine whether the following boards, departments, or officers shall be authorized to expend amounts from such revolving fund accounts, and to determine whether the maximum amounts that may be expended from such revolving fund accounts in fiscal year 2017 shall be the following amounts or any other amounts, and/or take any action relative thereto. For the Board of Selectmen, to be spent by the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator from fees received from the sale and advertising space within the Annual Town Report, to offset the cost of compiling and printing the Annual Town Report, up to five hundred dollars. For the Communications Department, to be spent by the Chief of Police or the Fire Chief, from fees received from residential and commercial burglar and fire alarm subscribers, to offset the cost of phone lines, postage, and other related costs, up to two hundred eighty dollars. For the Police Department, to be spent by the Chief of Police, from fees collected from police, from police exam test takers, to offset the cost of purchasing and administering the written examination and other related costs, up to one hundred dollars. For the Recreation Committee, to be spent by the Board of Health, from fees received from long-pond boat ramp users, to offset the cost of operating and maintaining the boat ramp, up to five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Requested, uh, submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of four thousand five hundred dollars from the sale of cemetery lots account, to be used by the Cemetery Commission for improvements to the Asona Bearing Ground, to include surveying of existing prepared land, marking out of lots, clearing new areas, performing maintenance, and improving roads and access, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article's adopted unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to fund the first year of a contract for the interim year adjustment of assessed, assessed values for fiscal year 2017, as required by the Massachusetts General Law and the Department of Revenue, and/or take any action relative thereto, was submitted by the Board of Assessors and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Articles adopted unanimously. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of nine thousand nine hundred dollars to fund the software license that allows the assessors to value property and the web hosting of the assessing data provided by P K Valuations Group, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eight as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eight is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, to repair and maintain town-owned buildings, grounds, and vehicles, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter One-Fifteen, Section Nine, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of three hundred fifty dollars, for the maintenance of veterans' graves, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Ten as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of five hundred fifty To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of five hundred fifty thousand dollars to operate the Water Enterprise Fund with an appropriation for as follows. Direct expenses, personnel, seventy-six thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars. Expenses, four hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred six dollars. Total, five hundred one thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars in the Water Enterprise Fund. And the sum of forty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund as part of the omnibus budget. With all amounts, five hundred fifty thousand dollars funded with the Water Enterprise receipts, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eleven as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eleven is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of two hundred seven thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund with an appropriation as follows. Direct expenses, personnel, three thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars. Expenses, one hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Total, one hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And the sum of eight thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund. As part of the omnibus budget, with all amounts, two hundred seven thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars funded with Sewer Enterprise receipts. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Twelve as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to accept as a townway the roadway entitled Costa Drive. In its entirety for a length of seven hundred fifty feet, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen. And shown on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan dated three twenty-two sixteen. Prepared by SFG Associates, Inc., on file with the town clerk. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire on behalf of the town by gift, purchase, or eminent domain. The fee to and/or easements in said Costa Drive. For all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Free Town, and any drainage, utility, access, and/or other easements related thereto. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Thirteen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to accept as a townway. The roadway entitled Extensions of King Philip Way and Jordan Lane. In its entirety for a length of one thousand three hundred thirty-one point eight-one feet. As heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan. Dated ten-six-fifteen. Prepared by Allen Ewing Engineering on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire. On behalf of the town by gift, purchase, or eminent domain. The fee to and/or easements in the extensions of King Philip Way and Jordan Lane. For all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Free Town. And any drainage, utility, access, and/or other easements related thereto. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
We recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
And motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws, by deleting Section eleven point two-three in its entirety. And inserting in place the relevant new Section eleven point two-three site plan review. The text of which is as on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning board. Further, to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws outlined to include this section. And further, that non-substantive changes. Excuse me, to the numbering of this bylaw. Be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board and it requires two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to approve as read, but before we vote, we have to hear the report of the planning board. We have to.
Do these people want to listen to me?
No, I don't think anybody wants to listen to you, but we still have to.
Keep it short, Kevin, you all want to listen.
I'm gonna keep it short. We recommend. Is that short? Kevin Demarest came in the Free Town Planning Board. Out of Article Fifteen, right?
Yep.
There's a difference between site plan review and special permit. During the site plan review process, we always refer to the rules and regulations of the special permit. This allows under site plan review, us to get a little bit more intricate with some of our requirements. It allows the folks who are applying before us. To be clear on some of procedural and approval and design standards, like lighting, drainage, landscaping. What is important to note on this is I always worked on through a district, local technical assistant grant with SERPED. So hats off to SERPED and Lauren Moreau, our planning technician here in town. I can tell you there's a couple more articles on here, but this has taken about a year, maybe a year and a half of effort between the planning board, SERPED, and Lauren, so. It's a good article, and I recommend that we approve it.
Okay, now, do we have any discussion on Article Fifteen? Alright, hearing none, the motion was to adopt Article Fifteen as read. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws, by adding new Section eleven point three-one. Off-street parking and loading regulations. The text of which is as on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning board. And further, to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws outlined. To include this new Section eleven point three-one. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board and requires two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
The Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, we recommend.
Okay, we'll hear Kevin's report again.
I'll be honest with you, SERPED has been after us for a while, and we've seen a glaring omission. We never had an official parking bylaw here in town. But yet, we had sections of our protective bylaw that referred to parking and parking bylaws, so this is a clarification, if you will. Just so folks understand, this is not a residential component, this is just a commercial component. And most often times, we would look at this under a site plan review or special permit. But again, it gives applicants the opportunity to see what our bylaw is, and they can do a design. And understand the design standards prior to coming before us, saves you time and energy. So, again, we recommend adoption.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as read. Is there any questions or discussion on Article Sixteen? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws. Section Two, definitions, to include definitions for gross floor area, landfill, and parking bay. A copy of those changes to the town of Free Town protective bylaws may be viewed at the office of the town clerk. Free Town, Town Hall, Three North Main Street, the Sonnet Pass. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board and requires two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Well, now hear the planning board report again.
Kevin Demarest came in the Free Town Planning Board. Often times when we create new bylaws. There are need, or there is a need for a definition, so I'll give you an example, gross floor area, so that, again. When you or I or applicants are looking at this, they understand what exactly that means, parking bay, landfill. So these were just, again, zoning is a living, breathing deal. Every year, you're gonna see us come before you to ask for some changes, so we're trying to just keep pace with that. So again, this is just definitions, and we do recommend adoption.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as read. Is there any further discussion on Article Seventeen? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, Article Eleven zoning bylaws. Section eleven point one-eight zoning districts, I Table of Use Regulations. By inserting landfill in the table as follows. Use, landfill, not allowed anywhere. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Okay, we will hear once again the report of the planning board.
Currently, we have a bylaw on the books that does not allow for landfills in the town. I believe it was adopted in town dating back in nineteen eighty-six, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Lauren?
March of eighty-seven.
March of eighty-seven, excuse me, thank you. What, over the last few years, we created a table of use. It's kind of zoning simplified. You open it up, you look at your use, you look at the different zones. Landfills weren't on there, so to avoid any confusion, we're adding landfill to that table of use, so that. If anybody wants to come put a landfill here in town, they'll know right away, you know. So, again, we recommend for adoption.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eighteen as read. Is there any further discussion on Article Eighteen? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eighteen is adopted unanimously. And thank you to the planning board for all of that. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. A sum of money for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town accountant for the Board of Selectmen and requires a two-thirds vote. The Board of Selectmen?
We recommend the amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Nineteen in the amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion?
I'll clue on these three towns, they're taking the way, I just want to clarify, is this all right above the monies voted for in the special town unit? So in addition to the one point eight billion, another four hundred forty thousand?
Is there any further discussion on Article Nineteen? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Nineteen is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty. And it will be a change, Article Twenty, it requires a two-thirds vote, not a majority vote. Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the following parcels of land. Taken by the town for non-payment of taxes from the tax title custodian. As held for tax title purposes, to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. Excuse me, under the provisions of Section Eight C of Chapter Forty of the General Laws. And further, to dedicate and designate the parcels for conservation purposes subject to the provisions, protections of Article Ninety-seven. Number one, the parcels shown as lots thirty-four and thirty-five on Assessors Map Two-O-Seven. With addresses of zero Richmond Road and zero Forge Pond. For title of the town, see Final Judgments recorded in the Bristol County Registry of Deeds, follow your district. At Book Two-Eight-Three-Nine, page three-three, and Book Two-Eight-Five-Six, page three-fifteen. Number two, parcel shown as lots thirty-eight and thirty-nine on Assessors Map Two-Thirty. With addresses of zero High Plains Street. For title of the town, see Final Judgment recorded in the Bristol County Registry of Deeds, follow your district at Book Six-Six-One-One, page one-nine-five. And/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission, and once again, it requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Twenty as read. Is there any discussion?
Gene Fox eleven, Jeffrey, I just want clarification on the first one, is that at the grade crossing?
No.
Okay, never mind.
One of them eventually comes down, it points, comes to a point at the grade crossing.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Alright. On the motion to adopt Article Twenty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Twenty is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty-One, is that still being withdrawn?
Yeah, we'd like to withdraw it.
Okay, Article Twenty-One is being withdrawn, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.